I'd like to call this special meeting December 3rd, 2018 to order. Please call the roll.
Kuss.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Kifer.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Bergeron.
Here.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards if you'd stand a moment for recognition of the passage of President Bush.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Communications, we have General Government and KPU Budget Updates. We have 8 through 17 for the General Government. They are Learning Public Works Garage Morehouse Division, Tool and Training, No Action Required on That. Budget Update 9 Concerns the General Government Fleet, No Action Required for Informational Purposes. Budget Update Number 10 Concerns the Appropriated Reserves and Fund Summary, Division Number Two, and No Action Required on That. Update Number 11 Concerns Proposed Increase to the Public Works Department Solid Waste Division Salvage and Disposal for Impounded Property. I think there's a motion to increase that by $30,000 in regards to what's happened historically at today. So we can make that motion. I think we've already gone through solid waste, it'll probably be able to do it at this particular time, so item number 11.
Your Honor.
Please proceed.
I'm going to the City Council amend the Chief Counsel in 19 General Government Operating and Capital Budget by increasing the Public Works Department Solid Waste Disposal Division Salvage and Disposal Impound Property Account, Account Number 620.02, in the amount of $30,000.
A bit moving second, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Carl, this is also used for impounded boats from the harbor, is that correct?
It is for cars, I'm not sure. Steve?
Do we waive the disposal fee on those?
Port Harbors Director Steve Cooper, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
On the disposal of impounded property, we also waive the disposal charges on impounded boats.
You mean the landfill?
Yeah.
For the smaller boats, yeah, landfill's pretty much been waiving those. Bigger ones, we have to, we can't take them to the landfill, so we have to deal with them other ways.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate that, thank you. So a bit moving second, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Kifer.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Kuss.
Here. Move this on to Budget Update Number 12 Interning Library Department Travel and Trading Costs, with information in regard to a question asked there, have the total, no action required at this time. Budget Update Number 13 Concerns KPU Secretary 15 Nisses gave us an update on where we're at with the number of spaces available and how fast we're using them, so no action required there. Budget Update Number 14 Charges for KPU Billing, there was an explanation for the billing, there was an explanation how that worked, how it came about. Again, there's no action required on that item. Budget Update Number 15 Streetlight Ownership and Maintenance, better define who's responsible and who owns the streetlights, and from what I can tell, it's KPU in regards to how those manage. No action required on that at this particular point. Budget Update Number 16 Fire Department Deal and Moving Equipment Account, there's some action required there. What they did is they gave us the updated information in regards to upgrading to a platform vehicle, I believe it what it was, and what that cost may be. So the recommendation of the City Council about the motion amended their 2019 General Government Operating Budget. Is there a motion to that effect?
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I move the City Council amend the 2019 General Government Operating and Capital Budget by increasing the appropriations for the Fire Department Capital Budget Vehicles and Moving Equipment Account, Account Number 70.00, and increasing bond proceeds in the amount of $345,750, and increase the appropriations of the transfers out of the Public Works Sales Tax Fund and Debt Service Principal and Interest Payments in the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $56,252, and increase transfers in revenue in the Debt Service Fund in the amount of $56,252.
Is there a second?
Second.
A bit moving second, Mark.
Your Honor, after attending several meetings with the committee that was put together that we spoke about at the last meeting, and a bit of education on my part, not only with that, but to the fact that forward funding debt-free seems to be difficult, since future councils can't be held obligated to actions of past councils, I was told that at one point there was half a million dollars set aside for this, and it went somewhere else. Also, Chief Hoag let me know that the first time this discussion came up about the ladder truck predates my tenure on the council, it's as long as four years ago. Since we just can't buy it outright, since we don't have the money, I'm going to recommend that we move forward. I believe Chief Hoag came up with a number that is more dialed in than the placeholder that we had last time, I think we should proceed.
Anybody else? So Chief, could you come and give me kind of an update on this platform? One of the concerns that I've heard, and I've heard from a person that had been on a ladder truck for a while, is that these platform trucks, due to the extension of the bucket or platform out front, this vehicle is 47 and a half feet long, and it may be fairly hard to maneuver in some places in Ketchikan.
Admiral Hoag, Fire Chief, thank you for the question. So I talked with a couple of different vendors that we've used for different trucks over the years, and got some pricing on them, they both, as far as pricing goes, seem to be pretty equal, so we're pretty confident with the number that we've put forward. My memo talked about some of the extra capabilities a platform can add, and those are true, you've seen that. It is true, it possibly can contribute to some maneuverability issues. Technology has come a long way though, since the old ladder trucks of the past, these are a lot more maneuverable than they used to be. It is true, it is 46 feet long, but we'll take a close look at the maneuverability, and there are other options out there. These were some examples for us to work from as a starting point, it doesn't mean that that's the exact truck that we're going to end up with in the end. So we will take that into consideration as we move forward.
Yeah, so some of the things that DOD did in regards to some of the, when we talked about the road construction and these curb bulbs and stuff, well, now we got a vehicle that we want to, around town we got these curb bulbs, so I think that if you could get with Public Works and model that in some of the areas, we're going to have to go up to Mary Frances, for instance.
Right, we're, we're, we'll have to look at those. Our current ladder truck is difficult to maneuver through our, through our current streets, so it'll be a trade-off. I would imagine that in the end, we'll have at least as much, if not more maneuverability in actuality than we currently have. But we'll take a close look at those criteria as we move through the actual purchase process.
So Fire Station 1 will house this vehicle without any problems?
Yes.
Twice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You don't want to have to buy a, build another fire?
You don't want to build a new fire station for a fire truck?
Just saying.
For a specific fire truck, I should say?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yes, Sam.
So does this fire truck have articulating rear wheels? Does it steer from the back, too?
This specific example model does not.
But there are trucks.
There are trucks with articulating rear steering, that's correct.
Yeah, I think I've seen those in the big city.
Mm-hmm. There's lots of different technologies that have come along, and so they are much more maneuverable, and like I said, we'll have to look at all of those details as we move through the procurement process. But again, we'll look to ensure we can access at least the same areas we can currently access.
And then, Carl, if there's been anything added that we would have concerns with?
Not that I'm aware of, and our Fire Marshal's done a good job in ensuring we're meeting the current fire code as we do improvements in the community. So, and in addition, I'll also mention, both vendors that I did speak to have been to Ketchikan, they've seen our streets, and that was one of the criteria that I put to them when I asked for their suggestions, was knowing our streets, knowing our terrain, knowing the tightness of our community, what are your recommendations? And that's what they came back with, in both cases, a similar answer.
And so one of the other things, Chief, that I talked to Carl about earlier, is in the process of procuring a new vehicle, when we write those, that bid, I think one of the options would be a trade-in on our present vehicle, because it's going to be hard to market that any other way, as far as I can tell. And there might be a trade-in value to that vehicle.
We can definitely ask the question.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
Well, getting on to the trade-in here, so, I'm not picking up a lot of value in the trade-in on this thing, would it be more valuable for us to just hang on to it?
Probably, probably not really of any value for us to hang on to it, we, we would, someone later on would come back and say, hey, you should replace this with another new fire truck, because you got two now. No, I, I don't really see a value, the expense to maintain it and continue to operate two is beyond what we can reasonably expect to do as a community.
Thank you.
And we can't figure out some, some smaller core community to give it to?
We can explore all those options, and we'll, we'll bring back a recommendation to council, it'll have to go either through a surplus process of some sort, so that'll come back to the council for, for final determination, but we'll put together some good options.
Yes, yeah.
Chief, would you explain what a platform truck is versus what we've got?
Sure. So aerial ladder is what we currently have, and it's, it's, the ladder goes straight up, and there's no working platform at the end, it's just the tip of a ladder, right? So on that style of apparatus, when you go up to work on it, you tie in with a truckman's belt, it's a safety clip that clips onto one of the rungs near the top of the ladder, and basically you're sprawled out on the ladder, maybe trying to lock your legs in, and that's how you work from the, from the end of that ladder. With the platform, it's got a bucket-type device at the end of the ladder, and so when you get up there to the top, then you can actually work from that platform, you have a stable area to work from, you can bring victims into that bucket, and they don't have to climb down the ladder, you can bring it down and lower them right to the ground, as opposed to climbing them up and down.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
So you would, for people with disabilities and elders and such, you're, it's a more accessible?
You can step out the window into the bucket, and then you can lower them right to the ground, instead of having to carry them down the ladder, or help them climb down the ladder when they have difficulty doing it.
And that's the only difference in that truck?
The, so the other difference you end up with, with the platform style, is typically those have a greater working capacity than, than the straight ladder. So a straight ladder can usually support one or two firefighters working from it, where the, the platform can be three or four.
Oh, okay.
Didn't we used to have a platform truck?
I don't know.
We had a hydraulic snorkel platform truck, I think we took the top of the pole off with that one here.
So why would we ever go with a platform truck to a ladder truck? Hey, let's get the ladder truck.
Money?
Anybody else?
Yeah, I was just going to, I was over in Japan three years ago, on a kanyama trip, we had the pleasure of going up in one of those platform trucks, and as, as someone who's been on, on, you know, many, many years ago, was on the end of the ladder truck, it was really nice to be in a platform. I, I, I felt secure, almost secure.
It is a safer working platform, working environment for, for the firefighters when they're out there.
Good.
Especially for people who are petrified.
Well, you wouldn't play a store, and, and, and the people you're trying to get out of the higher barriers, like, you know, exactly.
All right, anybody else? Karen, please call the roll.
Flora.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Kuss.
Here.
Zingy.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kifer. Yes.
Thank you, Karen. That moves us on to Budget Update Number 17, again Cemetery Burials, more information in regards to that, and No Action Required. So that moves us into the budget, we're in General Government, we left off, and we are starting with wastewater. That would be W1.
Bob?
Yeah.
I had a quick question on the grandyard.
Yes.
What's a niche, is that a burial site?
That's in the muzzle, I mean, we have crips for full caskets, and niches are for cremains.
And how many people can you put into a full casket if it's been cremated?
Well, you can put a whole family in there, if you don't want to use a casket.
I was curious.
You can buy one, one crib, and use it for generations if you were all cremated.
Just like they, they do with the?
We're holding out for water view, though.
Yes. We have the hillside right there.
When you build a water view, we're all saying.
I have people waiting. Water view?
All right, back to W1.
How about you just start yourself out?
Don't close your options, you have no idea what's, what's awaiting you, how much time to wait.
All right, so Public Works Wastewater Division, Department Executive Sumories. Move on to W2. Oh, before we get started with wastewater, Mark, would you please come up and introduce our two newest individuals, or new individuals?
Yeah, Mark, Mark Hilsom, Public Works Director, it'd be my pleasure to introduce our two newest division supervisors. The first one is Ketchikan resident for over seven years, and brings 14 years of garage experience to our garage division, Steve Langley.
Steve?
Second individual is quite a performer. He came up through the ranks in wastewater, as a wastewater operator, then senior wastewater operator. Went on to work at Ports and Harbors, has spent over 10 years of service with the, with the city. My pleasure to introduce Andrew Mulder.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
He looks good in 70s clothes.
Stripes.
And platform shoes, who's in the place?
All right, back to W2, it's a mission statement. Goals for 2019. So one of the things here is, in the goal, and I like it, is establish a team building program to increase crew morale and safety and productivity. And I don't know if that comes with any particular type of cost, but do we have a cost center for that in either Human Resources or in Individual Division Budget, Carl? No, we just handle it out of the?
Out of operating accounts.
Okay, thank you. Also on W2, we have the competition for 2018. On W3, we get into Division Summary, Personal Services, Expenditures and Categories, and we get into funding sources, the wastewater fund. So maybe this is the place to start with in regards to the budget for wastewater. We made a 6% increase in April last year, I believe it was. They were in a situation where they couldn't afford to fund a capital project of any kind, and they were just getting by with their operational account. Whereas Carl hasn't factored in any type of, of an increase in regards to rates for the wastewater division, they still are somewhat behind the curve, as you look into your transmittal letters, and where we're going with that, they're a fairly important operation for public safety, so I think that I would like to at least have a conversation in regards to a potential rate increase there. Maybe it'd be the same thing, where we wait until April, and whatever percentage that the council may decide on. But I think just to stay stagnant is probably not in the best interest of that productivity. Yeah, Gary.
What, out of curiosity, what would it look like if we considered doing an annual rate, you know, just small percentage raise to bring it up to without, instead of huge raises on, you know, the fees? Like, a lot of communities do that.
Yeah.
Over a period of time, it goes up every year a little bit.
So Carl, a little bit of brief history on where we're at with wastewater right now, and what we're looking at. I see we have some pretty aggressive projects and expenditures in regards, and we have some pretty big ground issues, in regards to that particular division.
If the council would go to page W10?
W10?
This is a summary of the capital improvement program that we're proposing for 2019. Total's $1.9 million at first blush. You may think that is a high number, but about $1.25 million of that goes to the meters on the wastewater side, and a million of that is grant-funded. So in actuality, your capital budget locally funded is less than a million dollars, and if you start going through the individual line items, with the exception of a couple of vehicles, all of the other capital projects are more or less maintenance, they're not replacing major infrastructure. And everybody knows what we've got in the grounds, both on the water and wastewater side. You know, it's very much a deteriorated system. If you go to the transmittal letter, there was an extensive discussion about what was recommended by the consultants that the council hired, in terms of where we should be for wastewater. If you go to B3, that table is at the bottom of that page. And from 2012 to 2019, doing the math real quickly, 48, 54, 60, 66, about 71% is what they recommended, and we're not even close to that in that time period. So we are definitely at a disadvantage in terms of our ability to start funding those systems. If you look at the forced mains along Tongas, we have those currently under design right now, it's, even with a slip lining approach, that's going to be very significant in terms of costs. It's something that we're probably never going to get current on, at least not in my lifetime, just given the numbers, but the council's got to come to terms with, we've got to start, because if we don't, the people who succeed you down the line are even going to have a bigger problem than what you're confronting right now. So I truly believe that, yeah, pursuant to the recommendations of that CS, you know, at a minimum, you should probably do what we did last year, is another 6%, increase. That, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, me and then, yeah.
What does that look like, per individual? What, I, I'm trying to remember.
I'd have to run the numbers, Councilmember Gage, I can do that. Yeah.
So the rate increases, are they going into a sinking fund for maintenance specifically, or is it going into the overall operation wherever it's needed?
If the council were to enact a rate increase that you wanted dedicated capital improvements, we can, we can do that, that's.
And if we didn't take any action other than do the rate increase, where would that money go right now, unless we acted?
Unless there was council direction, it would go into appropriated reserves of the wastewater fund. You know, we haven't programmed anything, so whatever, if you were to do a 6% increase, we haven't spent that money, so it would go into reserves. Now, if something comes up in the course of the year, and we need that money, we have to come to council and get your authorization to, to use it, but, you know, if you talk to Mr. Mueller, I think he'll tell you just how bad we are in terms of what's in the ground, and we got a lot of infrastructure that's just old and worn out, and that's just the reality of it. We're no different than any other community in the Lower 48, we're all facing the same problem.
Your Honor.
Yeah. I think if we go ahead with the proposed rate increase, it makes a lot of sense to dedicate that to capital improved, capital projects, so that that money doesn't end up somewhere else, if, if the state of the infrastructure is what it is, let's, let's try to address it directly with those funds, would be my suggestion, just like Councilman.
Yeah, just a comment, if you look at page W1, if I'm reading this right, the wastewater fund is budgeted for about $3.2 million, and it shows it being short 6%. If you're looking at that funding source down there. Now whether I'm, whether I'm thinking about this right or not, but I think 6 million, 6% on about $3 million is about $180,000 bucks, so it, it would almost be a break even on whatever we're in hold, if, if I'm looking at that right. And I may not be, so, but it's the line item under funding source that says wastewater fund.
Minus 6.
On W1. Sam?
Carl, I have another question. Who are the users, obviously, other than the folks that are hooked up to the wastewater? Is it, does the port come into it? Is there backer trucks that coming from the burrow? Are there other users other than the city ratepayers?
Most city ratepayers, it's business, commercial properties. I think from time to time, we do take pump sludge from, from other areas, but that's more often the exception than, than the rule, but it's primarily residential and commercial slash business.
So there's no other funding sources that we're not tapping into, so if we have, somebody regularly uses it outside?
No, it's not like, like the water haulers, we're not taking a lot of pump sludges in. So it's just, it's the city residents and businesses, that's the primary user.
Hard, hooked up to the system.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Need a motion?
For the dedicated fund?
What's that?
What is the motion for, for a dedicated fund for the?
6%? Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm going to increase the wastewater fund by 6% for the 2019 year, and then the rate? the rate increase would be put into a dedicated capital improvement fund.
Second, moving to second discussion. I think that kind of talked about, that help me their needs. Anybody else? Please call the rule.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Tyfer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Burj Run?
Hi.
Foose?
Here.
Before we move on, Carl, how much is in the appropriate reserves of the wastewater fund?
If you go to page C-1, we're projecting to start the year with 1.22 million, and we're projecting the end of the year with about 1.287 million. It's fund 505.
Okay, thank you.
So under budgetary, we already follow one, yeah. So the budget changes there, you know, the decrease in the chemicals count due to the recommendations by E.H. Turland Hill. I think that that program is ongoing, and more recommendations are forthcoming, but I think there's some stuff in our capital project. W-4, operating division, more changes there. Then we get into division operating budget details. W-5, operating expenditures, we're listed there in regards to contract for services, minor capital outlays, that sort of stuff. That W-5 starts a narrative, they continue on W-6 and W-7, and W-8 and W-9. Any questions on the narrative? Brings us to W-10, which has the major capital outlays, capital improvement projects, and again, will be taking us under the capital portion of the budget. Any questions or concerns there?
Your Honor, can I back up for a second?
Yes, you may.
I have a question, 605-01, back in the narrative. Ads and public announcements, up 44%. What sort of public announcements, what's the nature of those?
Andrew Mulder, wastewater supervisor. Right now, we simply have an ad that go in the paper around Thanksgiving and Christmas because of the amounts of grease that might be involved in turkeys and cooking, so that's where we generally have put those ads, but we're proposing to do it year round in papers and radio. I think I understand we can do public service announcements for free possibly, but we want to get some more info out there on grease and rags and whatnot to prevent clogs in the line and man hours involved in repairing equipment.
Yes.
I, I have a different question, but it might be the guy to answer. So I'm looking at the water meters, business and commercial under the wastewater, wouldn't that be under the water department?
We're going to have a further discussion on that, the capital thing.
So I'm looking at that wastewater, water meters, and that's, that'd be a rather unpleasant task to put a meter on that.
We have ways for it there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
So we are on W-10. Anybody else on wastewater? Moves us into Harbors X-1. Again, we have a summary on page X-1. X-2 is a continuation of those summaries. X-3, admission statements, goals for 2019. X-4, accomplishments for 2018, and then move it into the division summaries. Those are funding sources. We'll have permanent personnel. X-5, 2019 expenditures by type?
I had a question.
Yes, go ahead, Janie.
About how the, would birth four, the, how we would do the, how we figure out with the number of people coming in, I have it marked. What will our formula look like for the next couple of years as we get more and more people and what that costs?
That'll be in the store.
Oh, is it?
Not in Harvard, yes.
Oh, oh, I'm in the wrong, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there.
Okay. You're going fast, so.
Yeah, I know, that's all. Slow me down if you need me to.
Slow it down.
So operating budget changes to 2019. Personnel again, I think everybody has some of that. Infrastructure maintenance materials are up slightly. Parking changes there. Operating budget details. X-6, operating division, more details, their expenditures. X-7, continuation of that. We get into operating division of the Harbors, some narratives on the X-7. We continue to X-8, X-9, and X-10. Is there any questions in regards to any of those issues? Moves us on to X-11, Harbors capital budget. We have some major capital outlays. Mostly infrastructure and plant, granted, there are vehicle and some machinery and equipment. The lead that we're looking at, not much. We have three, some electrical stuff, more harbor fingers, security cameras, and float rehabilitation. Anything else on the Harbors capital budget? We'll be looking at that again if we page through the capital project. Anything on Harbor before we go into ports? Port Y-1, again, the division, the port division summaries. Y-2, so the mission statement, so the metrics of employees, the goals for 2019, again, some of the accomplishments. I think one of the bigger ones there, remove the pinnacle, which continuing to work on permits, road inspection for berth one and two, complete planning for permitting and design of berth one and two, revised port security plan for the quicks, overhaul of berth three barge, and I imagine we would have, you know, continuing to work in towards resolution for berth four. Accomplishments for 2018. Y-3, operating division, expenditures, funding, full-time equipment. Did you have a question for port in regards to?
Well, it's on, on Y-8. But, I do have a question on four.
Okay, we're on Y-4, operating budget changes for 2019, and then division operating budget details.
So we, have we always gone to the travel business, the cruise, sea trade, cruise, global conference of Miami?
We haven't always gone year to year. I think the, uh, Visitors Bureau has attended a few times to that. We went back as a group when we were talking about the head tax issue. We flew back for the governor and those locations. At this particular point, I think that I asked for it to be put in, because I think it's important for us to get a rest of what the cruise industry is doing worldwide and also how that impacts Alaska and Ketchikan in particular. We also have a contractor back there that's working for us in regards to that, and we'll be able to take a look at some of the Port Miami infrastructure and see how that works into it. So I think there's a lot to be gained by that, and the Alaska market is growing, and I think we need to understand how that's going to impact everybody.
Yeah, that was my only question, because I noticed we didn't have it last year, so it's just.
They had the convention center under remodel, so they held it someplace else. But the state of Alaska, tourism dollars puts in money for a booth that everybody can utilize to hock their wares or whatever they do, and then we're matched up against everybody else in the business. And we have a room that you could barely fit this diety in, and then we're right next to Italy, and they take up a place as big as this building, so that's what we're competing with in that market.
And just Alaska.
Just Alaska.
When does that happen, Bob?
I believe at half in March, right?
It's February, I think it's February.
You think it's February?
I believe so. I'll, I'll check.
That's a terrible time to go to Florida.
I know.
Yeah.
It's changed since. We'll check it out and get back.
Sure. Operating expenditures continue on page 45.
Your Honor?
Yes?
One item, 635.13, marketing services, which I believe the manager told me was the other half of the KDB grant. Couple comments and some, maybe a question or two. So started looking at the KDB's website and an update that was sent to me. A lot of good, strong numbers when you look at page visits, number of clicks, revenue generated, things like that. Looks like there's a lot of really positive economic activity going on there. Ms. Mackey was timed enough to answer a couple of questions that I had emailed over about a week ago or so. And one of those was a question of quantification, so how do you, how do we know what the results are for, well, basically for the city's investment, the grant for 1.8 million dollar building, the, essentially a no-charge lease? And it looks like it's, and I don't want to speak for her, but it's hard to quantify. And I can understand why, because they are not, they're a liaison between the customer and the provider. And I was just wondering if there has ever been, or a recent survey of the members or the people who utilize KDB to find out, how's it going, what are they getting, what do they think, up or down, could be done, what could be improved?
And would that be something they would advertise at the point of contact, you think, or how would you do that?
Well, I don't know, I would hope to get some input from the director, but it would seem to me it would be their survey to find out. I have, I have customer surveys in, in my business, and we get feedback, good, bad, neutral. I wish they would have done this, they did this really well, they could have done this better. It'd be something along, something along those lines. There are fee-paying members of that organization who might like to make that, and then we could, then we could see what the results are.
Your Honor, I know there was a survey three years ago done by the, the Southeast Region for cruise passengers, but I don't know if anyone's ever done one with the actual local businesses that use.
Well, it looks, looks like a lot of what's going on on their website is, is non-cruise, the independent traffic, bed and breakfast, excursions, car rentals, you know, thi- things like that. And again, I could be wrong, but it, it seems like we're going to get 1.0x million number of visitors or not, regardless of, of the activities of the KDB. I think the, I think the cruise lines are doing probably a darn good job of advocating for themselves already.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, just a comment. I know in the past, there's always been a concern about, we're looking for them to bring in the independent traveler, because the cruise lines are coming. And to measure that is really, really tough, and I know I've been on their case a lot, Bobby, Paul, and Carl, and maybe Dave know that, but, yeah, it is a challenge, but if I looked at that one report that they gave about two Fridays ago, and if it didn't get around, I'll give it to, I'll get it to everybody. It seems like, it appears that the independent traveler is up. And, and, and it, in airlines, the ferries and other places, it, it's up, and it looked like the hotel rooms were probably up, it being filled, so it, how you measure whether what we're putting in the pot and what the burrows throwing into the pot, and then their other budget is, as much as I'm sometimes skeptical, I don't know how you measure it.
Andy, would you like to speak to any of that? You have any insight? I know that you're probably.
I know, I was looking for.
I didn't realize you were sitting back there.
She was hiding.
Patty Mackey, President, Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. I'm not sure I quite understand the question, but to go back to council members, Flora's comments, we do periodically survey our members, and they all have different reasons for why they belong and pay their dues, and the different programs that they pay into to advertise alongside of our programs. So we're out there doing the generic come-to-Ketchikan message, and then our members have the ability, if they'd like to put an ad in the vacation planner or on the website that says, you know, here's my business and think of me. So it's kind of a cooperative effort there, and they help fund some of the costs associated with the printing of the planner and the distribution, which is also something that we look to the city to help us with. In terms of cruise passenger services, I can tell you that more often than not, when we get requests for a vacation guide, it's a cruise passenger. They've booked the cruise, they want to know more about the community that they're coming to, and that's where our influence with cruise passengers is most effective, is that we're able to talk to them before they come. And I'd like to think that the information they get helps them make better decisions about what they want to do while they're here, whether that's tours, or going shopping, or where they want to eat and get crab. Crab is very trendy right now, so as you can see from the storefronts, a lot of our restaurants are capitalizing on that. In terms of other research, those of you that were on may recall in the spring and that we presented this survey that the McDowell Group has been doing for us, it's a combination of economic impact and visitor satisfaction. I can provide copies to anybody who wants it, I know that the manager does have a copy of it. And that gives some insight into what our visitors are doing, what they're, you know, they're planning, and, and kind of the trends in how they're planning their trips and making decisions, and that's what we use when we think about where we're going to advertise and what we're going to advertise. As Mr. Flora pointed out, I did provide some information to him last week, and I'm happy to, I can find the member survey, we just did one last year. I will tell you that the responses are as different as the types of businesses that are members, they each have different things that they value. So I'm not sure if I've answered all of your questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, mostly, well, going back to your, my, the clarity of my question was one of quantification. So I understand, since you aren't the Bed and Breakfast, you aren't the car rental agency, it's, it's difficult for you to say, the numbers are trending up, that's, that's great, that's good news. I'm sure you're a participant in that forward movement, but there's, it's difficult for you to say, we receive funds and fees of X and the return is Y, just like any other business would do. I don't know if the surveys that you've done in the past, if you would ask Mr. Bed and Breakfast, your business grew how much last year, and we're And where did your leads come from? Well, twenty-six percent came from KDB. Twenty-two percent came from blah, whatever they are, right? That was basically the nature of my question. I don't know if that's part of your survey. And yes, if we could get copies of your last survey, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Again, it's been over a year since we did it, so I don't remember the specifics. Typically, the, the questions are, what services do you value and do you use? That kind of thing. We do have the ability to track, for example, how many visitors come to our website and then go to a member's individual webpage. Those, the statistics are sent to our members every month, so they can see the type of value that they're getting from their presence on the site. So those are some other numbers that are available as well. But I do want to clarify that our, our work for the community is twofold. It is the visitor services program that we provide every summer through the Birth Two Visitor Center and the staffing of that and providing information to folks coming in. It's also the visitor information they get before and off, sometimes after their visit. And then there's the marketing, the community side of what we do. And those are kind of two separate programs. And I know I've mentioned in the past, but just to reiterate, the funding that we get from the borough is specifically CPV funds, state funds, that has to go towards passenger and cruise ship services at the dock. So all of those funds are dedicated directly toward the visitor center. And then we use our member-generated funds, the revenue we generate, as well as some of the city funds that aren't CPV to provide marketing. So, and then the rest of the city funds goes to help with the visitor center, so.
Thank you, Professor.
Can I just have a, on that one survey you have there, can we get a copy of that? But isn't it, they're going to do that again here real soon, aren't they? They do it every three years, don't they?
The McDowell, the, well, there's, this is specific Ketchikan information that we basically piggyback onto the state visitor statistics program, which happens every four to five years. So the most recent AVSP study was in 2016. Our data in this study is updated through 2017. And, you know, I've mentioned too, that the state funding situation being what it is, I have no clue when another statewide study will be funded.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Y five again, operating expenditures. Y six, for operating division, ending up at the expenditure section, going into narratives. Y seven, more narratives. Y eight, Y nine.
So here's where I have the question.
Yes.
So the, in six four five point oh four rents and leases, the infrastructure is two point seven million, forty-three and some change. The account provides for the lease of berth four, so the annual lease payment, including a fixed amount of one point eight million, went up. So I just was wondering about the formula and how that... So it used to be one point eight million, now it's...
Steve.
Port Harbor Director Steve Corpron. I brought a few pages from the berth four lease, just so I can make sure I didn't misspeak at all. The base rent is one point eight million, and that's based on eight hundred and twenty thousand passengers. From eight hundred and twenty thousand up to nine hundred thousand, there's an escalator of seven fifty per passenger. So if they reach exactly nine hundred thousand, it escalates up to two point four million. From nine hundred thousand to one point one million, it's a thirty percent of the increase in the passenger warfage fees. Generated from nine hundred thousand to one point one million, in addition to that, two point four million at a maximum of three hundred and sixty thousand. So that, that makes a maximum of one, at one point one million of two point seven six million. And then, and for every year, it's above one point one million, there's a performance or incentive bonus. So the first year, it's one point one million or higher. It's, it's an additional twenty-seven thousand, six hundred. If they hit it two years in a row, then they get two times the twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, which would be another fifty-five thousand, two hundred. If it's three years in a row, then it's three times, which would be another eighty-two thousand, eight hundred. If they dip below one point one million in an intervening year, then it resets the counter to zero again. So if you go above one point one million, then it's just one time the twenty-seven six.
So with the anticipated one point five million that we're supposed to be seeing in the fall of next year, is that what people, one point three? Okay.
Well, this is based on the paying passenger count. So like even though we were around one point one million total passenger count this year, the actual paying passenger count was one million, forty-five thousand, and seventy-nine. So the payment this year was two point six six million. And then that's paid out in two semi-annual installments. So we just, we just made a payment a couple of days ago, December first, of one point three five seven million. And then the other half of that payment is due in June of next year.
So with the anticipation of the rising numbers of passengers, what is our anticipated, what we're going to be paying out for the next, to the end of that lease?
If I'm reading this correctly, it's capped at two point seven six million plus the incentives for every year in a row, it's above one point one million.
So the incentives aren't capped?
As long as they hit more than one point one million every year in a row, then it goes on, they get an additional twenty-seven thousand, six hundred for every year in a row, it's over one point one million. But I, I'm not reading anything in here that gives them anything above one point one as far as a, an escalator besides the incentive bonus.
Dave.
So is that one point one million paying passengers? So that means they hit...
Yeah, it's...
So that means they hit this year.
They didn't. It was, you're right, it was one zero four five. So there was no incentive this year, but it...
But the assumption is...
But it, but it's still, it was two point six six million, which is above the one point eight million base, because they, they hit that, they were near the top of that second, that second scale. Yes, sir.
Okay, so Steve, what is the estimated port fees for the cruise line passengers this year for that two point seven four you think we're going to pay for berth four? I want to know what, how much are we going to get and how much of that is going to go to berth four? And does that figure you gave us include the taxes and the replacement fee? I think there's two things we have to either keep or hide or we're paying, which just comes out of that same pot.
Okay, that's about four questions at once.
Okay. Start out with, how much income are we getting from that one point two million or whatever it is we're going to get this year, people? What's that estimated figure?
Okay, I'm going to go to the, the budget performance report, so let me take a quick look at that real quick. All right, so the revenue warfe, you're talking about just the passenger warfe?
Whatever it is that we're taking it from to pay for berth four, whichever pot it's coming out of.
So how much of our revenue is coming out of that, like the head tax?
Because, yeah, you have a dockage fee based on the length of the vessel. You have a port development fee based on the length of the vessel. Then you have a passenger warfe fee, AKA the head tax.
Right.
And that, so the passenger warfe fee this year was a little over seven point three million. And then the docking fees was one point one million, so there's eight point four. And then the port development fee was another eight hundred thousand, so eight point four, so nine point two million. Those, those are the basic things we get from the cruise ships for the dockage fee, the port development fee, and the passenger warfe fee.
Okay, then from that comes...
There is...
Two point seven four, is that what you said, where it goes to dock four? Two point...
Two point seven four three.
Right. That's, that's one of our expenses is two point seven, basically, or two point six six this year.
Two point six, okay. And then where is the, the replacement fee? Because there's a replacement fee in there somewhere, and there's also the property taxes that we pay.
Right.
So the property taxes?
Is that on top of the two point six?
Yes, yeah.
What do you mean on top of?
Well, we, we...
They're separate fee.
It's a separate fee, but it comes out of that nine point two million. And it benefits dock four.
Based on the letter that Finance sent to them last week, or two weeks ago, there was twenty thousand, twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars in there for the repair and replacement fund that we required to give to them. So that's in addition to the one point, the half of the one point three three. The two point six six, so there's an extra basically twenty-one thousand that we were giving them for the repair and replacement fund. That does not include the, the property tax isn't in what that payment is. That's something we're paying.
So I have property...
Yeah, that would be on the expense side in here.
The property tax is four hundred and eighty-five thousand, and the ports and repairs and replacements were five hundred and twenty-two thousand.
That's not just for the berth four?
No, oh, okay. That's, okay.
Yeah, account nine seventy-five zero zero, that's payment in lieu of taxes, which includes the payment in lieu of taxes of three nineteen assessed by the port. That's the city paying in to the general fund. And then a hundred and sixty-six thousand in taxes assessed against berth four by the city in Ketchikan Gateway Borough.
Mark.
Steve, the revenue figures you just quoted, the seven point three, one point one, one point eight, is that just berth four? Is that all four births?
No, that's all four.
Okay, so that's all four births. That's the revenue from all four births. And then their escalator, even though they're just berth four, is also based on passenger counts, including the three municipally owned births, correct?
Yeah, their escalators are based on total passenger count.
Do we have, okay, so we know what we're paying them. Do we have, is it possible to obtain revenue figures for what actually flows through berth four? Because this nine point two million is taking into account the seventy-five percent that has nothing to do with their lease. Is there a way to break that out per birth or berth four versus...
Birth four by the code is supposed to get twenty-five percent of the passengers. So take that eight point two figure or whatever it was I gave you, and just twenty-five percent of that.
Thank you.
It's been just under twenty-five percent the last couple of years, but for all intents and purposes, twenty-five percent.
How much, how much...
Yep.
Okay, all I'd do is, is I would like to ask the manager or someone to provide us with, from the first day we started paying for berth four, an accounting of how much we've paid out each year for the fees, the replacement costs in lieu of taxes and taxes or whatever, whatever else we're taking out that...
You want the berth four cost?
I want the berth four cost.
From birth to date?
From birth to date.
Okay. Birth with IR instead of ER.
Project it out for ten years, which project it out for ten years, but it's going to tell us what we're going to get into that thing.
Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it gets twenty-five percent of the passengers and it gets thirty-five percent of the revenue? I mean, for what we're looking at here, what the escalator causes, this is going to be, it's already disproportionate now, but with the escalation causes, it's going to be even more. So shouldn't we be looking at the dockage and warfage fees to offset that? So we're getting at least seventy-five percent of the overall revenues. Why aren't we paying out more than twenty-five percent of what we're taking in for dockage warfage fees to berth four?
My recommendation, if you want to look at additional warfage fees, is to wait until we have something on the table, either proposals from the lines to contribute to our projects and then have projects in hand, so we can say, this is what the cost is going to be. In order to fund it, we're going to need to do this, this, and we're going to need a warfage fee like this. So we need to have something to justify the rate increase first and then propose a rate increase. That's my recommendation anyway.
Thank you. All right, any more questions?
So just want to make sure I understand this. So basically, so once, once we got past the hundred thousand, we saw, we saw the base, the, you know, the base rate of one point eight go, basically jumped to two point seven per day. Now, what you're saying is, as we move farther up into one point three, one point four, one point five eventually, that we're not going to see that dramatic of an increase? That's what it sounded like to me.
No.
Okay, so then, that's what I want to hear.
That small annual... And the last adjustment is twenty...
Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred.
So once you get above that level...
Right.
Year one, they'll get twenty-seven thousand. Year two, they'll get twice that much. Year three, they'll get three times that much. Year four, they get four times that much. If it's consecutive years, it keeps compounding. So the further you get down the road, that's going to become a very significant number.
Unless it dips below one point one, then the counter resets.
Well, as I said, it's not at one point one now, so obviously it really...
I think this is a bigger conversation than just what we're having here for budgeting.
Right, right.
So I think that, again, we're in that process now of working with the industry and trying to figure out how we can expand, and that'll be all part of those numbers.
For budgeting in 2019, predictions are that we will exceed one point one million. So it, the payment will be two seventy, two point seven six million plus the twenty-seven thousand, six hundred for budgeting purpose in two, in 2019.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys for the discussion.
Oh, I also Googled C-Trade's April ninth to eleventh.
Okay. Y nine? Moving on to Y ten. Y eleven, capital budget for the port. Moves us out of the port division and into risk management. Z one.
Bob, what, just for a minute, where are you leaving?
Steve?
You almost got away.
I went through about six pages too quick. Leave him on one of the cap, well, it's capital. If it's capital, I'll deal with capital, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can deal with capital when we get to capital.
Sorry.
Thank you. Carl, do you have anything to add in regards to our risk management?
No, sir.
As we can see, the property insurance and liability insurance both increased. When I talk about the fact that we had a reduction in membership dividends, what was the, what was the overall cause of that, do you know?
I do not know.
Thank you. Z two, budget detail. Moves us into debt service. A one. There's a debt service summary. Two thousand nineteen, three million, seven hundred and twelve dollars, eight hundred and fifty-seven. Down a little bit. A two. And the narrative shows that the debt service principal is forty-one percent, debt service interest fifty-nine percent. Out of that, three million, seven hundred and twelve, eight fifty-seven. Anything else on debt service?
So the reason it dropped was primarily just because we didn't buy any furniture.
And our hospitals are largest.
Moves us on into transfers and advances. K B one. Transfers are necessary for revenues earned in one account and then accounted for in another fund. Major transfers were in the hospital sales tax, an obligation bond debt service, and the general fund. A B two, funding sources. Operating budget changes. Operating budget changes. Operating budget details for operating expenditures. A-B-three, continuation. Operating expenditures. A-B-four, continuation of those. And then we have the narrative that transfers and advances. Any questions on those? We'll take a five-minute break and then get into the C-I-P.
So did we return the direction of fire truck control?
Yeah.
Did it run?
Maybe.
It rots. Doesn't need a whole bar, but. There, I heard some pop. Now we're back. So we're on, we're on A-four. And just in vehicles in the fire department, we're looking at five million dollars over the next five years. Got to figure out how to utilize taxes and capital to our best for all departments. Continue on down, A-five. Summary of five years. Public work streets, garage, building, maintenance. A-six and A-seven. A-eight, continuation of public workplace water, port and harbor. And then there's A-nine is a summary of projects by funding sources all years. That information continues on A-ten. A-eleven. Moves out on A-twelve. A-thirteen is a summary of funding expenditures by year. For each department. Moves us on through that and we'll start the actual departments. B-one is the first one from the finance department. And we're pretty much concerning ourselves with those funds that be expended in two thirteen. So. And on B-two, they show financial accounting system implementation, twenty thousand. Any questions there? Any questions on the finance? Information technology. We have a couple of projects, we talked about them earlier, with the microserver license and the hyper-V virtualization. Those are explained to you on C-two and C-three. Those are the only items they're asking for funding in this two nineteen budget. Any questions on any other in the finance, or the information technology group? Moving out of the information technology, we move into the fire department. We have a number of items listed in two nineteen, repair and renovation to station number two, it's a multi-year program. Reservishing replacements, so we'll do that one first. Fire department on D-two is renovation of station two. Any questions regarding that? We have, on D-three, we have refurbished replacement, fifty-two, seven fifty-two. This is the peril unit. It was in the budget for one million, four thousand, two hundred and fifty, and we increased that with the budget update. So, Chief, can I ask you a question about the vehicles that we have? I believe in the letter that we received from the committee in regards to vehicles and the number of vehicles we have and what they, come rise up. Because of our mutual aid agreement and the line we get in it now in regards to response, has our need for all this equipment changed or is there a minimum equipment? Because before we were standalone department, we had to cover everything, but now with mutual aid agreement, we may not have to do that.
Right, Abner Hope Fire Chief. Several meetings ago, when we received the report from ESCI on our apparatus condition, I brought forward proposal at that time along with that report, recommending that we actually eliminate two of our apparatus and, and replace them with quick response vehicles, which will be much less expensive, but provide us some additional capabilities. So yes, we are reducing the number of the larger apparatus based on our current agreements that are in place.
So how do you, I guess, review or compile that information and apply it to what, what the situation we are with Ketchikan in regards to what our mutual aid partners have for equipment and how the response, the mutual aid agreement works? Is it, are we, I'm, what I'm asking is, do we have more equipment than we particularly need to keep our ISO ratings or anything like?
Right, we, we weigh what we have against the ISO rating and then we look at what capabilities we can rely on from those neighboring partners to provide as a first response asset. And if we can rely on them to provide that as a first response, then we could potentially consider elimination of some of that capability from our own internal capability, which is how we came to the recommendation to eliminate one tanker and one engine.
Yeah, I've often thought that if we had a confi, a, a combined fire for the island, not everybody doing their own little thing, we could be more efficient in the equipment that we buy, meeting the needs of the whole community. I think Juno had done that, they have a unified fire command there. But I just, I just wondered how that plays into our five-year plan on equipment and that kind of stuff.
Your capability required is based on the largest facility and, so we're required to have by ISO, one ladder truck, one aerial apparatus. And I believe we're at three engines is what we're required to have, so.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So that, also in two thousand and nineteen, we have replacement of fifty-two, five, seventy-six, T-three. That's a nineteen eighty-six water tender. So we'll re, uh, replace that. And we need financing after. On D-five, we have the dispatch console. And, so in my understanding, we're going to purchase it in the first year and in the second year, is that correct? So this, as you, as I read the narratives here, is interoperable patient to that, so that we can communicate to all the entities on the island through.
That's correct. Also, the dispatch consoles that we currently have are, they're, they're no longer manufacturing those and they've ended the support for those as well. So replacement parts and repair parts are going to be more and more difficult to come by.
So I, I see that in the purchasing option, we have a substantial amount of federal state grants in order to purchase that. But there's a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar cost for the installation. So I guess I'm, I'm asking, since this benefits the whole island, why there isn't more participation from the Ketchikan Gateway Borough or other fire?
So we applied for this grant under the state homeland security grant program. We applied for the entire amount needed for the project. We got some quotes in advance and, and know what the number is. This is the real number that we need for the equipment and the installation. We received the grant award notice very late in the budget process. And so we initially budgeted to be able to ensure we could complete the project. But the intent would be to apply again for additional funds under that grant program next year and to seek cost sharing funding from other entities involved.
Appreciate that, thank you. Anybody?
What's the difference between that type of a console and what the police department's using for dispatch?
These are, these are the consoles in dispatch. Because I manage our, our homeland security grants, I applied for the grant and we put that budget, that line item into my budget so that I can manage that grant. So these are the dispatch consoles in the police station.
Okay.
We do work together, correct?
So how do you switch those over?
How, well, so they have three consoles. One is in kind of a room behind the main dispatch center. And most likely what has happened, the, the contract would come up with a plan for the phasing of the installation, but they would probably do the two in the front first while they operate out of the back and then they would do the third one after that. Or potentially disp, or install that third one in alternate location first, operate off of that one and then do the two main ones that they have in, in the main center.
I wouldn't want to call it nine oh, sorry, under construction.
We would try to avoid that.
Please call it back later.
That wouldn't be good.
Thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
We also have G-seven, replacement of fifty-two, seven fifty-nine. They got fifteen years old. And I think that is the extent of two thousand and nineteen. Captain project for the fire department, any questions? Moves us into the police department. We have a couple things. We talked about the existing gate replacement and we have the continuous replacement of the mark control vehicles in the cycle. Any questions?
Did we skip over the Harry Newell and all that?
That's, that's, that's a couple years.
That's out four years ago. We, they worked on that this year, the grant didn't come through, or last year I think it was, so they cut it off to a time.
Should I, did I hear you correctly, we're talking about the, the doors now?
They're, yeah, that's under the police department. The capital project up there, priority one.
Mr. Mayor, we're still working on an update for that project. One of the things we're trying to nail down, if the decision is made to go with a solid door, both ends, we may have a ventilation issue, so we're trying to nail that down and bring back the full picture.
Just, just in case it doesn't work out, we'll continue on. Thank you, Carl. Again, rotation of vehicles. Joe, do the new vehicles go into station cars or do they go to take homes and then the take homes go to station?
Joe, I choose please. They go to take home cars.
Okay.
And then they rotate into station cars eventually.
Okay.
And they're, again, they're under state contract. We jump in on the trooper price. We get them outfitted under the trooper contract out of Anchorage. I think we increased a little bit this year and we got caught up to the cost of shipping is what kind of, it kind of goes up. The, the prices of vehicles stay pretty static year to year for the most part and the outfitting stays pretty static year to year.
Good, thank you. So moves us on to F-one, public health. Ketchikan Medical Center in Fancham. Any questions there?
So this is what we're calling?
What's that?
This is what we, this is our obligation, our bond.
Correct. Moves us on into the museum department. Summary of projects, they're out five years. First one is the Thomas Historical Museum HVAC replacement. And it looks like we're going to do some minor stuff. It's coming here and the actual replacement upgrades will be done in two thousand and twenty. And I don't know, Mark explained it, but the item G-three, the exterior envelope project gets in operation with that HVAC. If the exterior walls aren't destructed in a manner that will meet what you need to do with this HVAC system, we'll just continually fight itself, yes?
My understanding is that moisture and the windows are leaking, so that HVAC within just hit the counter into it, until they fix that.
Yeah. The envelope will be done first and then we'll use that information to work on designing the HVAC. Three on page G-four. Political storage and stabilization. We had a pretty good conversation on ceiling of the standing poles out there, ongoing maintenance, that's on G-five. And that ends up the two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, um, question, you know, a couple of years ago, we, I guess, sort of put together a spending plan on making the old library be okay for the museum. And I think we had a budget. And it would be nice to see just exactly what we've spent down there because it may be, looking out through there, somebody said we should have built a new building.
I'd really like to.
We need to find out what we put into that thing. We, and maybe every year we need to know what we've got into our buildings because we don't, like the vehicles, we don't know what they've got into them. Judy?
I remember that. I remember thinking, why are we doing this? Why aren't we just building a new one? And I, I was a new councilperson at the time and I was told, no, this is how we're going to do it. So I'd really like to know. So I'd really like to know too, cause it seems to me we've spent an awful lot of money so far. It just, it's like throwing money in a, in the black hole.
It's too late now.
We always say that, you know?
Well, in this case, so is. And we had, we had that decision to make several years ago. And for whatever reason, the council's, I mean, I've, I've been involved with new, new museum projects now for almost thirty years. And the, and the decision has always, I'm sorry. The decision has always been, that's too much money, that's too much money. Then we look back fifteen years ago, that wasn't so much money. Well.
Right.
And I've always argued that unfortunately that particular building, which was never meant to be a permanent building, you know, we are still throwing huge amounts of money at, but at this point, we're not, we're not gonna build a museum.
No, I get that, but I'm just saying.
But, but, you know, I was, you know, I was part of the one to help make the decision, we're gonna do it this way. But my problem is I'm not seeing what we've already spent and is, and is what we talked about three, four, or five years ago. Is this thing escalating or is it staying on what our architects and all those people budgeted? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
You may.
For those of you who were on the council at the time, we presented a report that was undertaken by Welsh Whitley relative to new versus doing something with the Centennial Building. And the council opted to go with the Centennial Building. And there were a series of improvements that we presented that were not insignificant in cost. And I remember the night at the Civic Center when that, that whole report was presented. And, you know, basically what we've done is we've done the shell of the building in terms of renovations upstairs and downstairs. We've done the permanent exhibit. Now we're getting into the systems that the architect told you that you were gonna have to do at some point. Heating and ventilation, humidity, the whole, the whole nine yards. And, and that's what you're seeing in, in, in this capital budget over the next four or five years. We, we'll give you the original report and we'll show you what you've spent so far and show you what's coming to do.
I'd like to see.
We, we can do that.
Yeah, I think the plan would force a phased operation rather than going out for a large bond and building a new building.
Correct.
Trying to select a site and all that other kind of stuff. I think over the long run, I think this is the most, you know, conventional choice that they made.
I'm not saying it was a bad choice. Don't, don't get, don't get me wrong. I think what we've accomplished so far is something to be very proud of relative to, you know, an asset for the community. But you wanna make sure that what you've done so far is protected going down the road. And that's why we have to do these, these other, other things.
Thank you. Okay, anything else in with you? That moves us into the Civic Center. We have a two thousand nineteen project, we'll be operating, operating wall replacement. We had a pretty good conversation on that during the department operating budget section. Do you have any large projects they have slated for two nineteen? Anything else?
Good question. I don't know if it has anything with the tram not running. What, so we're starting to see people moving from the, to the Civic Center, using it because the tram isn't running. So I don't know where we are on that.
The tram is an asset owned by Cape Fox Corporation.
So we have nothing to do with it anymore?
Not unless the council directs us to get involved.
I just had to remember that at one point there was some kind of agreement with the city or maybe I'm just missing.
At least their property.
It was all easements.
We gave them an easement with the idea they would operate the tram so people would go to the Civic Center.
Right.
Now, we could obviously go, go back and revisit that, but I'm not sure it's.
Cause it's been down for quite a while.
We can't make them and fix it is the problem. And it's expensive and it's a tram that isn't built anymore and they have a lot of issues. But once again, we're, we're left, we're left with the Civic Center. And I assume it's still relatively full and still doing well and still not.
No, it, it, it is, but the tram not operating can be, can be an issue at times.
It's, it's a major issue. And then that also puts further pressure on parking there. Which we've talked about numerous times here, that in a certain point, if the tram's not gonna run, we probably need to even work with Cape Fox or someone to improve the parking there.
I guess it, I guess it would be worth just a letter asking about an update on the operational tram.
Where you can let us park on the hillside.
Anything else? Brings us to I one, economic development, a couple of smaller projects there. One is the timber wood product contributor exhibit at the Spilsco site. And then the stamp mill. Bring this to J one, public works engineering. Major building abatement, foreclosure, property remediation. We have item two, replacement of vehicles for engineering staff. Item three, updated area of photo and graphic mapping, we talked about that. Item four, administrative building HVAC valve replacements. Five is ESRI conversion. Talks about how that's divvied up between the different departments that utilize that. G seven is the administration building parking lot. So Mark, if I can talk to you a little bit about the paving of the parking lot. I see you have it broken into two years. Is there any drainage or grade issues that we have? And I guess I don't know what's the cost of mobilization for each one of these individuals. Is there?
There, there's not much in terms of drainage issues, number one. Mobilization, we really just broke it into two phases because they would have to do it in two phases in order to provide parking anyway. We have to keep the building open. It's a fairly big project. So we didn't anticipate a whole lot in terms of mobilization and we decided to spread it out. You know, over two years.
So I don't know how these projects did out, but is there, I noticed that in the wastewater, when you get there, they have larger concrete apron thing they wanna pour out in front of one of the waste, uh, landfill buildings, excuse me.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there an option to bid together more quantities? Do we get a better price? I mean, I don't know.
You may get a little bit of economy of scale so far. The concrete plants haven't really seen a way to give a discounted price with bulk quantity purchase. So they're not doing that. You know, we would, we would always try, if, if the projects were closer together, we'd try to group them, bundle them together to try to get some economy of scale. But in this case, I don't think you're gonna realize a whole lot. If one was a very small pore and the other was a very large pore, then perhaps, yeah, makes sense. In this case, I don't foresee you're gonna necessarily cut that price very much.
It's looking a sable buck someplace.
Yeah, me too. I, I get it. I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That looks like it ends with two nineteen. I don't know, we have one more. Creek sampling on page J ten. So two nineteen, it's gonna be twenty thousand for sampling the Carolina Creek, Holy Creek, Ketchikan Creek. Again, understanding of the water quality and all that.
Does this kind of go along with the water quality or?
Yeah, I think we're just following up on that, I think.
It's a set of baselines, is that it?
Yeah, establishing our own baseline.
Uh, yeah, that's correct. We do parallel sampling with DEC so that we can confirm their results, identify any areas that might be outliers in terms of their data. That particular program with the creek testing is pointing toward a watershed management plan. So both for the watershed and marine waters. And I think you'll have an update on that in your next council packet.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Anything else there? If not, moves us on to K one, cemetery.
I got one.
Yeah.
Question. So if we're filling up our plots, when, when, where do we expand to? If we only have twenty-five spots up or?
There, twenty, twenty?
Yeah, I think there's still space available on top that can be developed for grave site. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, you, Mayor's, Mayor's exactly right. There's areas for these around the existing improvements. So the nice part about the crypts and niches is that the, the site prep is pretty benign. And we do have room to do it. The building itself, they're somewhat complicated because the manufacturers have their reps come out during installation. So that makes it a little more complicated.
So in the future expansion, there's a wedge shape of property still behind the existing cemetery. It's not a lot. But then again, we'd have the opportunity to discuss potential expansion of the Coast Guard property to the South Sea.
Yeah, right.
And then develop property there. And then we have a larger track out by.
Very large, yeah.
Yeah.
At Ship Creek?
Out by Shoop Street.
Oh, Shoop Street.
Yep.
So we, we have options yet. Thank you, Mark.
Right, thank you.
We have a retaining wall, that's next to the animal shelter there. That's a rock retaining wall. We're gonna do something a little bit different. Creating, grading improvements are ongoing, so it's more like a better nineteen. I'd like to scissor lift in order to get the caskets up to the cliffs.
Down and up?
Yeah.
So they don't float?
Paving improvements. We can do the parking lot up on the, on the cliffs. Any other with the cemetery? Larger one, which is the street department. L two has Safer Streets Sidewalk Program. It's an ongoing program. You see it's coming through the years. Has things arise, wheelchair ramps and that type of stuff. Item two, staircases and board rock reconstruction. L four, we're on rock and tree maintenance. This originally came about when we did the third ambient bypassing, a lot of bow down, but we've used it in other areas too. And it's just a maintenance item we keep in there. pavement overlay, surface repairs.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just touch on that briefly. You'll note that we have it funded in two thousand nineteen, commensurate with what we've done in the past. You'll note that there is no appropriation for twenty twenty and that's because we're recommending that our efforts be directed to Ketchikan Lakes Road, which is the next CIP number five. And talking to the Public Works Director, given the magnitude of that project, we simply are not gonna have the folks available to do both in terms of overseeing both projects. So that's why you're not seeing anything programmed in twenty twenty for overlays and, and surface repairs.
Thank you, girl. And then we have another one on L eight, bridge maintenance repairs. We got a list in the state of Alaska and we have to do some repairs in two weeks regards to that stuff. Water Street Trestle number one reconstruction. Sales and Gord Street, we have the design fracture is probably in that. Need to construction in two thousand twenty. There's street bridge retained repair.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
And this might be off topic. Up on the, are we gonna be doing anything with Dock Street with all the construction that's going on now? Where, with the sidewalks up in that area? Is that something that's coming down affect?
Mark?
That's where the Centennial lot is and?
The DOT project does not go up there. We don't currently have anything specifically identified. Although occasionally we do look at our Safer Street and Sidewalk Program. We do try to concentrate on higher rates of pedestrian use, especially areas that are on the walking tour and that sort of thing. So if there's a particular sidewalk in there, we do keep, try to keep an inventory of projects that we then use that Safer Street and Sidewalk money to fund.
Only reason I ask is that sidewalk is really high compared to all the new ones that are coming up. But one of the things I noticed over the summer is the Centennial lot is so congested with cars. And more, the cars are bigger than they used to be. And I was, just a suggestion that at some point, maybe we, that road is already one-way and it's really wide. And consider giving more room to the Centennial lot so that it just isn't a nightmare getting in and out of there, let alone being able to park. I don't even know how people get in and out of their cars in the parking spots.
I, I understand. I've observed similar things.
I was watching it today going.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. End up with that, while you're looking at that, what I have noticed over the years, since we have a business day, we go back and forth a lot. And Jenny is correct about the fact that the vehicle size has increased. And Janie is correct about the fact that the vehicle size has increased enough that now it's become possible to get in there. But the lovely red brick thing is about as slippery, whether it's wet or icy. I've fallen three times now. My wife's fallen once. Maybe we need to figure out something to replace that, because it's not safe.
I appreciate that input. Thank you.
And I love it, it looks nice, but it's a danger.
Yeah.
It's a hazard right now.
And what brought it up was I actually was watching one of our flaggers escorting an elderly woman down the street to get her where she needed to go, because that's, and I noticed it too, because I was over there, that it's become very slick. And I know it's icy out, but like he said, I almost busted my butt on those bricks a few times too, so.
It's wet or icy, which is about eighty percent of the year.
Wet or icy, yeah.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
My wife would have to mention that.
Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of questions. One, Mark may have to explain it to me, but the whole list is prioritized.
Yeah.
But yet we jump down and we're funding priorities twenty-two or twenty-one, twenty-two, and we left out a number of them up in the middle. And so if it's a priority, is it a priority or is it not? And there's probably some logic which you can help me maybe understand.
Maybe.
I can shed some light. There were last minute additions that came into the street CIP. And rather than trying to rework the whole spreadsheet to get them up higher in priority list, we just tagged them at the end. Simple as that.
Okay.
There's also some that, you know, we would have really liked to have gotten done this year, but then got bumped to you know, funding in the next year. A couple of those were DOT driven, based on their schedule slipping, so.
Okay, then I got, well, when we get down to one of them, I'll talk about it, because another question is that the other night, the owners of the landing out there jumped or cornered me and said, we had another flood. And we're gonna do something about stormwater. And I, I tried to tell him that it was, that it was an issue and we knew it. But my issue, my concern is, do we know where and why he got flooded again? Because he's spent a heck of a lot of work down there to keep that from flooding. So is it something up above that caused the problem? And if we don't know, then maybe somebody needs to contact Terry Wonzler out there and ask him what happened and see where the heck it come from.
We've been in touch with Mr. Wonzler.
Okay.
As well as his legal counsel. We were told we were going to get another discussion. We haven't had that yet. But it goes to what we tried to tell the council several years ago. You've got a maze of private storm sewers on private property that have not been permitted, connected to public storm facilities. And we've identified about ten million dollars of immediate improvements that probably need to be done. Mr. Brocki oversaw that in his previous life as Assistant Public Works Director. I'm pretty sure he's probably glad to be in the water division now. It's a problem. And we have no funding source. And the council's given no direction as to how you want to approach trying to get our, the city's arms around these private drainage systems that contribute. Everything flows downhill. And unfortunately, Mr. Wonzler's at the bottom point. And, you know.
No, I think you covered it.
So let me get this right, everything flows downhill.
How dangerous is that?
But again, the town was built starting at the bottom going up, so you have smaller pipes and you have bigger pipes on the top, which is backwards. So, and of course, the more you develop, the faster water comes.
Right.
Variety issues there. I don't know if there'd be a plan to divert some of the upstream waters into the larger drainage.
We, we are looking at that. And in fact, that did happen in the past. There was a significant amount of drainage that got cut off and taken a different direction. So that's already happened. You know, it's unfortunate for the landing. I really feel for them. It's a bad situation. They're built in a low area, very low lying area. Historical drainage went there. I think I understand Terry's position. And, you know, if, if we were to take on private storm sewer all across the city, Carl's price tag wouldn't come close to touching it. So that's the, that's the situation we're in. I don't see any reality to taking on private storm sewer pipe replacement projects and doing that for all similarly situated individuals.
I have a question.
Yes.
So what kind of direction are you looking for from the council for this kind of a problem?
If the council wants to get a handle on the storm drainage issues, one, you've gotta say to the staff that you want us to develop a funding source. And it will be a new funding source. We've proposed a couple in the past. They got no traction. And you have to be prepared to say, we want you to address the storm drainage systems on private property, because you're never gonna fix the problem until it becomes really a municipally owned system that we can control. But that's gonna cost a lot of money too.
Yeah, I was wondering what words of wisdom I could come up with, you know, you're saying, you know, the council needs to say something. Well, what? So it doesn't sound like there's a funding source that we could make, develop, that would begin to touch this problem. But yet it always goes back to the individual property owner and the way that they have addressed their drainage systems.
We floated the concept of creating a separate storm drainage utility. And, you know, doing it just like water, electric and telecom, but the council wasn't very excited about that approach. We brought it forward, so.
I'm not very excited about this. Yes, that sounds great. Let's start it. You know, it's, but there's gotta be some kind of an answer. I mean, I mean, a private property owner should be responsible for their storm drainage. That's, you know, I see that all over, that, you know, they just hook up willy nilly to wherever. If it goes downhill, it's off their property, then it's not their problem.
I can tell you that, and don't hold me to the dates, but Chuck did an extensive analysis and came up with a storm drainage ordinance nineteen eighty-six. Eighty-three. That would have started to address this problem. And it sat on the shelf.
We need to use a report to divert water.
Is it possible to save?
Well, maybe we should put something, we'll look at a future agenda item in February or something and get away from the new year. At least do it informationally wise and decide what we can.
Because it just sounds like it's gonna be an exasperated issue that could end up costing us more in the future, right?
I think the grief factor would be off the scale of this issue. I mean, if we separate, we have, we have a new utility. It's the drainage utility. And we are the drainage police, and we are here to tell you that you are not in compliance.
I can tell you this is becoming more and more an issue at the federal level. And just like secondary wastewater treatment, at some point, it will find its way to Alaska. And then we will be compelled to deal with it.
Forced.
And it'll be a lot more expensive at that point too.
Yeah.
All right. So we move into L fourteen, concrete road reconstruction and repair. And we have L fifteen, wall above reconstruction repair. Snowplow truck for the liquor street department.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I, you know, not being flippant or anything, but Carl, didn't you mention earlier this year that we're gonna have a, supposed to have less snow and more rain this year?
What I heard was a NOAA forecast for a warmer than average winter.
It certainly seems to be developed in that way. So, you know, I'm looking at this particular line item, and it was supposed to wear, we're supposed to buy one according to this budget in two thousand nineteen?
This is being done in anticipation of the current unit being nursed through the season. And this is to be able to have a replacement ready for two thousand twenty. If we don't do it now, we may not have the existing unit operational come two thousand twenty.
Well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate the city for actually having a vehicle older than one that I personally own. I haven't seen one yet. And so, yeah, I don't see the problem with that.
Fire trucks are old, isn't it?
Nineteen ninety-three?
Fire trucks, eighty's.
Well, you know, we don't get.
Buy the fire, buy this vehicle.
We don't get it, we'll get that snow in nineteen twenty.
Yeah, but we're saving money.
As we move through the street department budget, we're on L twenty-two. Thomas Avenue crosswalk improvements. Highway safety improvement program. We are on L twenty-two. L twenty-three, creek street improvements.
Just a quick note.
Yes, go right ahead.
On, I actually, while I was at the Silk Conference on statewide independent living, I was given information on how we can, like, get more buy-in with DOT with the blinking pedestrian lights for disabilities and stuff. So I'm getting that, so. Stay tuned.
Interesting to see what DOT does under new management.
Oh, they're under new, oh. Again.
Just like L management.
Where is this happening, the crosswalk improvement?
Mark, have we yet to identify an area for those?
So is this priority twenty-one?
Correct.
Yes.
On page L twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay. So this is the crosswalk improvements. It's generally titled Thomas Avenue Crosswalk Improvements. But it's the Deer Mountain Stedman, the one at the hospital, and then the one in vigor.
So I have a comment about the one at the hospital. So we, I think these things are a tremendous asset, but to the left of it is a new sign on a building that is like.
Seen it, yes.
It's very distracting, and it's actually a safety issue. Because folks will go by that thing and they'll be reading the sign, and then somebody will be in the crosswalk. So, isn't that the borough? Don't they have sign ordinances for that?
So there's, there's two avenues there. The borough is one, but I'm not sure that it conflicts with their regulations. The other avenue is DOT, because they actually regulate signage within the right of way. And that sign projects out. And so in looking at it, I believe it is in the right of way. And we do have it on our list to approach the property owner and see what can be done with them first. And then go to DOT if necessary. A lot of those LED blinking signs, a lot of them have intensity controls, so they can be really dimmed down. But people don't like to use them because they want it real flashy. The fear, and I've had a conversation with Chief White about this as well, and share his concern that somebody could enter the crosswalk thinking they're protected with the blinking sign going off. And the driver being totally distracted by the sign clutter that's taking away their warning.
Right, especially by the hospital.
I know. It's of all places. There was a little bit of tree limbs obscuring a little bit too. We did go in and cut those to help. We'll be pursuing the blinking sign as well.
Can I add to it too? The one I've seen before where they have on the back to front, they have on both sides. Because when you come around the corner, you can't see this one on this side until you're right on it. Whereas if there was actually a blinking sign on the opposite side.
Oh, okay.
Oncoming, you would see it way faster.
So are you talking the hospital one as well?
Yeah, I'm talking that. Because when you come around.
And on the back of which, which side?
So you know, when you're going north.
Yes.
And you're driving, you can see this, the back of this one.
Okay, the back of the southbound.
Right, so, but you can't see the one that's actually for the northbound.
That's a great suggestion. We'll look into that.
Otherwise, I think they're awesome.
Thank you.
All right, move on to L twenty-three and twenty-two, creek street improvement.
I got a question on that one there. I, I guess I've got two problems. One is I'm not too sure how that, what the rationale is for doing it. And the second is CPV funds, they're too far away from the dock. So anyway.
Relative to the use of CPV funds, I will acknowledge that it's a judgment call. But when you think about the number of people off the ships that go over to Creek Street, and now that we're getting the bliss and the joy, you've been on Creek Street when those ships are in, it's almost a question of having to elbow your way through to get through Creek Street at times. If these ships continue to get bigger, we're gonna have to do something to make it viable for the number of people that are going through at any given time. And that's what this is for.
Yeah, I think Carl said it exactly right. We need to disperse people. On Creek Street, I think the challenge is being able to add some areas without jeopardizing the character of what we have there. So we can't make this look like a modern, you know, day highway. So what we're looking at is an additional viewing platform on existing city owned property. Be a destination, somewhere to spread out. A very modest widening near Dolly's Wash House, very small, in the same character as what's out there now. We're looking at getting some good survey done so that we know what property we're working on, you know, working at. And then there's a, I forget exactly where this is, which property, but there's a, there's a fire hydrant there that we're working with water division to move and just open up an intersection, just like two feet, just to get people the ability to pass as they come up on the intersection. And then the Stedman Street viewing platform, it's kinda like a, I don't know, it's like a triangle and then a rectangle, if you look at it. So we're gonna try to square that off just to make it, you know, more of a usable area. It's kinda weird the way part of it was built. So fairly modest improvements, but areas we're hoping to be able to get people to disperse and move in and out a little better.
That's a million dollars.
Well, the second phase of that has some more, so this is the immediate phase is, so three hundred thousand for this year. Future, the seven hundred thousand dollar. Future, um, the seven hundred thousand dollar, I think we really need, as, as the visitors increase, you get more and more people up there. Having alternate routes around there is gonna get really, really important. So, um, you know, we have, we're thinking another, um, dock expansion for the dock next to, um, is that the, is that the, I'm trying to think, there's a commercial business just down from the viewing platform by the Red Bridge, so we're thinking expansion there and some other improvements all along there. Again, trying to be very sensitive in keeping with the, the current character of the area, but be able to get people to pass, so, that's the idea. We don't have a design yet, that's why I'm being intentionally vague for that particular project.
Well, and it, uh, if some of us recall, when we had the public meetings by Moffett Nickel setting in here, a number of the people commented about putting four big cruise ships in here at the same time, twenty thousand people and gonna cut it, and we're gonna have to figure out how we manage it and working with them. It's not that we can make the streets four times wider. And I, and I don't have the answer, but I, I know that we cannot probably adjust our infrastructure to putting, quote, that many people on the street at a time. It's gonna mean, how do those ships stagger in here and stagger out? And I know we tried to look at the way we were arranging docks so that we didn't really have the capability of having four of them at a time, but, but if they come in one in the morning, one in the afternoon, like somebody said, that gives us the leeway, so, we gotta be smarter than just building it bigger.
I, I agree, and we're looking at this from the parameters that the council set out to post-Panamax first. And, uh, you could have one coming in in the morning and then another one coming in that afternoon, so it's, we know what we have right now, just on, based on what we saw this past season. You know, we need to find the best alternative ways to disperse people in the community. That's why, uh, the, the promenade behind the logging show is gonna take on added importance. If we do a post-Panamax at one, we need the ability to start channeling those people out and getting them dispersed, so.
Well, and depending upon how we end up funding docks one and two, CVP money isn't gonna go very far, because we're burning it.
So, on the, down there by the Salvation Army, I guess apparently there used to be picnic tables? Are they gonna be putting those back?
I would have to check.
Because somebody asked and they really liked having that down there, so, a place to sit and rest.
How long ago were they there?
Um, it was last summer. I, I don't know, maybe it was longer, I don't, it was just brought to my attention this last summer and they were asking me if I could, I never looked at it.
We used to have seats in the bus station too, which is the reason why we don't have them anymore.
Yeah, that doesn't solve that wrong.
How late are we going there?
Yeah.
What's that?
We're gonna go home.
Not yet. Groomster.
Slave driver.
We have a log more.
Yeah.
We'll stop asking questions a little bit.
Yeah, we'll get to it in a hurry. Shaw and Bark Creek Culver Repair. We're in the garage and warehouse division, where we got that here. We'll go to nine thirty and we'll be done. Garage and warehouse, they have, uh, plate the trucks and mechanics. We have a rotary vehicle lift for the shop. That's pretty much what they had for two thousand and nineteen. We have building maintenance, couple of smaller projects there. An oil bar station, uh, reroute, and control line underground, dirty tank removal.
What page is that on, Bob?
N one, N two, and N three.
He's just gonna stay.
O one, we have a solid waste. We have a cover generation. Comverbelt replacement, O three. O four, item three, filling approach slab. R V four, transfer billing, alley conversion. And the question is, are there solid waste? Waste water. Item one, sewer manhole replacement. Two, upgraded sewer laterals. Item three, large pump station upgrades. Item four, small pump station upgrade. Item five is, uh, wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement. Item six, water meter, business and commercial. So, I have a question on this and I still don't agree that the wastewater should be a hundred, I mean, should be fifty percent of this operation. I do see that we're getting some clean water bond money there and stuff, but they're, they're not gonna receive half the revenue off of it. The bigger share of the revenue is what you go into the water department, especially in commercial applications. If you go to like a canary, um, the, uh, the majority of water is washdown water going down the drain for a little small change that comes back to, if the wastewater billable. It, it just, it just doesn't seem that it's a fifty-fifty, um, payback on those. And then, of course, it's gonna be harder for the wastewater to repay those funds than it will be the water department in regards to revenue to receive.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
So, that's an interesting discussion, Mr. Mayor. I, we just voted to increase wastewater by six percent, so, and this is a capital project and we wanted to take that six percent into the capital fund. So, if we use the logic which is outlined here today, we'd use the six percent that was set aside to fund this, out of wastewater, so, I see your point.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of capital projects.
No, and I think, and I think, I, I think the, the further point that I'm trying to make is that I think that the capital fund for wastewater was directional wastewater projects, not on water. I was looking at this line item and wondering why this wasn't in the wastewater at all.
Well, the revenue, or the rate structure would be developed so water in is billed and then wastewater out would be billed according to the water meters. They'd have to go in and do an assessment of the operations to determine how much is down the drain and not through the wastewater system. But there are commercial entities out there that would be a hundred percent of the water going back into the wastewater system, so it'd be a formula in regards to the structure.
Typically municipalities will base their wastewater rates on the, the water consumed, so it's very common.
Very common. Dick, you have one.
Yeah, just to comment on this project here, uh, in the middle of the write-up, it talks about annual appropriations to the water division's operating budget twenty twenty to fund a water, a meter shop. And I do not support the city hiring anybody doing a meter shop, we need to contract it. So, when we get to water, we can talk about it.
We, we will follow the direction that, that the council wants to give on this, but I will tell you from the manager's perspective, if I've got a customer who's got a complaint about his bill based on a meter that we're not maintaining, it's gonna be very hard for me to adjudicate that complaint. You don't have someone maintaining your electric meters, a, a third party. You don't have a third party maintaining your water meters. It's just, it's, 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 it's not a good practice from my perspective. We'll do what the council wants, but-
We'll have more of it, it's got to-
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Should you have something, Emily?
Uh, I think it got answered. So, we're ba, billing the sewage water based on what water they actually use.
Correct.
Um, not based on whether or not they have a system that really, like, for instance, it, some places have a system where it goes in and makes spray water because they can't, it's, um, it can't go out and deal-
You would affect each business in regards to that, there'd be a theft.
I'm just thinking of, just can, so.
And then I, seven is a utility truck replacement. And I looked at this a little bit, uh, you know, it's a two hundred thousand dollar vehicle. And I understand that it's their, uh, frontline vehicle in regards to, because it has a crane on it and stuff like that. But how much of this vehicle is just used for transportation in regards to? I know they go to the pump station and they may have to read some meters and document that, look, make sure everything's operating, maybe add chlorine tablets to the wet well or something like that. But here, and here we're running a two hundred thousand dollar truck, it does have pretty good service life on it, that kind of stuff, but, um, I'm just not so sure we shouldn't be doing that, with pickup with toolboxes on them and then have a, a major truck like this for repairing major intercutter. I, I don't know.
Andrew Mulder, wastewater supervisor. Yeah, this is a, uh, we get all sorts of field calls. You're right, if they're just going to the pump station that day, it could go in any truck, really. But we get all sorts of calls at any time of day or night that we have to have tools for. These trucks carry a complement of, from manhole lids, lifters, to, um, uh, electric tools used for securing any, anything and everything down, out there. So, uh, it needs a load, you know, the capacity to, to hold all these tools that are regularly available.
Yeah, Andrew, I don't, I don't disagree with that, I think that we do need this type of truck. I'm just wondering if we're burning up the time and hours on the put and wire and tear on it for just minor service stuff.
Yeah, we can address that.
Kind of look at that.
Yeah, we can address that.
Because I wouldn't be adverse to buying a, another, you know, pickup truck with the toolbox and that kind of stuff on to make those normal routine type things and run out and die stuff and do things like that and then utilize this, uh, you know, just a thought. Thank you. And then we have another item here for replacement of a, uh, truck, more truck, yeah, my one. We have two wastewater, we'll be done. So, we have, uh, item nine is, uh, chlorine decor, uh, automation. And this is at the plant, is that correct?
Yeah.
Andrew, so didn't we, that plant originally came with a liquid chlorine injection system? Is that system still in place except for the tank?
No, that, that's, that's been, I've never seen that system. Some of the remnants are still around, but it was a gas chlorination-
Yeah.
-uh, tank, I believe.
Yes.
And that's been long gone.
So, are you gonna go back to gas or are you gonna do something different?
I have, I, I don't know what they're planning, that'd be, uh, CH two M or Jacobs, I think it's called now, would be probably the outfit to, uh-
I know we had a system in there when it was originally built and we decided we didn't want to utilize it.
Right, it's, it's pretty dangerous in, in general, to have gas chlor-
Yeah, you know, training and-
So, I think there's a, our idea would be a liquid injection of some sort. And then a dechlorination at the back of the plant, at the end.
Thank you. Turnbar Road, Phase One, Valley Ford. There's something that's been on the list for quite a while and we need to move forward with some of this stuff. And item twelve, another two thousand and nineteen, the ESLRI conversion. That brings us to the end of wait, so I heard you have her, so. Is there any closing comments, Dick?
I don't think so, Your Honor.
Emily? Yeah. No, Landmark, Mark?
No.
How about you, Dick?
I moved to defer consideration to two thousand, the draft two thousand and nineteen general operating capital budget and two thousand and nineteen draft catch company employees' operating capital budget until Thursday, December sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
All right. Good move, second it, all is paper. Yeah, well. Thank you, guys.